Good afternoon. I want to invite, uh, I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. At this time, if the council members would please stand for the invocation which will be given by Reverend Charles Smith, the new leader of Trinity Episcopal Church here in Portsmouth. And at the conclusion of that, if everyone would please stand for the pledge allegiance, that'd be great. Thank you. Welcome Reverend.
Thank you. Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in our city of Portsmouth, the Spirit of wisdom, chastity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Pastor, you don't get off that easy. Reverend, would you please come back up, uh, just take a moment if you would, by way of introduction, a little bit about yourself. We just chatted briefly. You mentioned you're out of the cornfields in Farmville, and which part of the cornfield were you from?
Certainly, I grew up, I grew up in Farmville, Virginia, and did my undergraduate training at Hampton-Sidney College, a great Virginia school, and did my graduate seminary training at Virginia Theological Seminary in Alexandria, and finished at Oxford. And I'm really excited about the great and good things God's got going at Trinity Portsmouth.
Absolutely.
So come give us a visit sometime at the corner of Court and High.
Yes, sir. We know it well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Portsmouth. Absolutely, yes, sir. And please convey to Reverend Babbitt, I believe, who's been pitch hitting for a while. She's, I think, down in Virginia Beach, and she's done an outstanding job, and we're very pleased to have you here and look forward to great things. Thank you Reverend.
Thank you.
All right. Members of City Council, if you would, indicate your presence electronically.
There are six members of council present.
Thank you. Just by way of info, Councilwoman Simmons is a little under weather tonight and won't be with us. Members of City Council, you have before you a consideration, the minutes of a call meeting of August the 11th, 2014, a call meeting of August 12th, 2014, and a regular meeting of August 12th, 2014. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted, 6-0.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Okay. Very quick, before we get into the next piece, Madam Clerk, I see we have a couple of people in the audience that I'd like to introduce. I see the Honorable Judge Johnny Morrison here. Judge, would you please stand? Welcome. It's always great to see you. And he's been accompanied by the great clerk of court here, City of Portsmouth, that we all honor and respect and admire. Ms. Morrison, would you please stand? And I guess this is a great time since I see Mr. Randall here to announce that Councilwoman Randall and her lovely young husband are celebrating today your 56th wedding anniversary. How about that? Mr. Randall, it's always good to see you, sir, and understand you're here for her to keep it short. You're going on a date tonight. Is that right? Keep it short. He's going on a date. Yes, ma'am. All right. Well, happy anniversary. And also, as you can see, our clerk's not here, up here, but she's in attendance, and she's celebrating tomorrow her 26th wedding anniversary. All right. So, uh, and with that, and I also see Councilman Paige Cherry, wife is here. Yvette, would you please stand? It's always good to see you. All right, with that, and we've finished those formalities, Madam Clerk, please.
Unfinished business, 14-290, use permit. A, resolution granting the request of Jensen Baker on behalf of the Mindpower Enterprise Incorporated for a use permit for a civic lodge club with a youth club facility and an existing building located 3801 King Street. U.P.-14-10, first reading vote, 6-0 approved. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Okay.
I'm in need of a motion.
Okay. Move for adoption. All right.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Okay.
This item is adopted, 5 to 0 with one abstention. Councilman Meeks.
Very good.
City manager's report. 14-309, adoption of ordinance transferring the sum of $250,487 from the FY 2014-15 unassigned fund balance to the FY 2014-15 general fund and appropriating said funds in the FY 2014-15 general fund for repayment to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development of Community Development Block Grant Program Funds. Vision principles, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, 6-0.
Councilman Meeks.
Mayor, I just want to clear the air on the last abstain because I have a financial interest.
Uh huh. Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
14-310, adoption of ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $10,550 from the Business Consortium for Arts Support and Appropriating Said Funds and the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund for the outdoor sculpture, competition, and exhibition at the Portsmouth Art and Cultural Center. Vision principle, lifelong learning community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically.
Okay. Very good.
This item is adopted, 6-0.
14-311, adoption of ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $165,000 from the Office of the Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia and appropriating said funds in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund for use by the Third Judicial District Circuit Court for the Portsmouth Adult Drug Treatment Court. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and a sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, 6-0. 14-312, adoption of ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $57,992 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said funds in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund for the local emergency management program grant from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and a sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically.
This item is adopted, 6-0. 14-313, adoption of ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $323,588 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund for use by the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office for the Victim Witness Program. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and a sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically.
This item is adopted, 6-0. 14-314, adoption of ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $2,000 from the Virginia Wireless E-911 Services Board and appropriating said funds in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund for the Wireless E-911 Service Public Safety Answering Point Education Program. Vision principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically.
This item is adopted, 6-0. 14-315, adoption of ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $13,473 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2014-15 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund to provide funding to support the development of comprehensive regional suicide prevention plans. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and a sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically.
This item is adopted, 6-0. 14-316, adoption of a resolution to approve the FY 15 Performance Contract for the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and a sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically.
This item is adopted, 6-0. New business, 14-317, boards and commissions. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk, Mayor, members of council. The Personnel Committee has no boards and commission members to deliberate tonight.
14-318, items submitted by council members. Adoption of ordinance authorizing the transfer of $398,312 from the FY 2014-15 undesignated fund balance to the FY 2014-15 general fund balance and appropriating said funds to provide a one-time 3% bonus to the employees of the city's constitutional officers. Electronic roll call, and I have a registered speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldy-Kutrosky.
And as Mr. Kutrosky makes his way up, let me just say that, you know, this council was very disheartening when we found out that the state had a huge budget issue and were not able to give any type of raise or bonus to our constitutional employees, and we look at them as our own employees, and it was very unfortunate, and we understand that we were going to have these short hauls from time to time. But this council felt it was necessary to try to take at least some action, and while we could not give them a 3% permanent raise like we did our own employees, we, we thought it was, at least at a minimum, we could do a bonus, and this $398,000 will take care of that for this year. I'm sure there's some that were expecting more either from the Commonwealth or from the city, but again, we stepped up to the plate, and I want to thank my council colleagues for stepping up and doing this because I think it was the right thing to do. And with that, Mr. Kutrosky, good afternoon, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. I respectfully disagree with your analysis. Not that I don't have regard for the people who serve us in the, in the various offices of our constitutional officers, but number one, you haven't paid for this. You're taking it out of the undesignated fund balance, which has already been hit substantially since the budget was put together for expenses that were not built into the budget. That balance isn't yours. You have affected it during the time you've been in those seats, but that is, that balance has been accumulated through several different iterations of council and a couple of different, different iterations of mayor, and it serves as our cushion against the unforeseen. So for you all to treat that as, and as a self-filling money bucket to be drawn against any time the notion enters your heads to do so is irresponsible. It is fiscally irresponsible, and it foretells future tax increases because although the city is not in the bond market during this fiscal year, we tend to go every two years, which means the rating agencies will be, will be exercising heightened scrutiny in the next fiscal year and the run-up to the next fiscal year. And so they will be looking at this, and I expect they will be looking askance at what you're doing here. But, you know, if you're going to throw the people's money into bonuses for employees of the Commonwealth, where's the 3% increase for the schools? That wasn't in your budget this year, but don't they serve the people of this city? Don't they serve our children? And I'm not talking just about the teachers, I'm talking about the bus drivers and the janitors and the people behind the scenes who make the wheels turn in the school system. Now how about the state police officers who patrol Interstate 264 within the bounds of Portsmouth? Why not give them an increase too? Because aren't they serving our community? Aren't they being denied an increase at the Commonwealth level? The Commonwealth's budget is some $90 billion a year. Ours is half a billion dollars a year. We are going to make up for shortfalls at, in the Commonwealth's revenue collection? I think not. Our revenues were flat. The revenues we rely on for growth in services and growth in paychecks for our employees, it was flat. So you've tapped past savings already, and now you're further digging in to our reserve. I don't think that's sound fiscal policy. Councilmember Moody, during the budget deliberations, said something that made sense to me. You know, we're talking about these expenditures, but where are the savings? That question never got answered. Savings? What savings? So I would say this is the wrong approach, and I would urge you to vote no on this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And let me just say, you know, I respect your opinion, and your point's well taken, and a lot of the things that you mentioned, we took under consideration, but at the end of the day, our people are our most valuable assets, and to not do something for those folks, I thought would be criminal on our part because of the work and, and the things that those constitutional officers and those people have done and what they meant to this city. And so I appreciate your comments. I really appreciate your comments about our educators, and we're hoping with going self-insured and the savings that we have there, that we'll be able to put something in that category for increasing their salaries. So all of those things are under consideration, but thank you for your comments, sir. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify one matter. The original draft of this ordinance provided a one-time bonus to the employees of the constitutional officers. The heading on the amended ordinance doesn't reflect a later decision to add the constitutional officers themselves to it. The text of the ordinance does provide for that, but I wanted to make it clear for the record that, that the bonus is, is being appropriated for both the constitutional officers and their employees.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I too respect Mr. Godoldy-Kutrosky's comments. I would say I do disagree on one point. You, you mentioned that they're state employees, certainly inferred that. You know, they're city employees. They just happen to work for constitutional officers. That's who their boss is. They're paid on a City of Portsmouth paycheck. They serve the citizens of our city. If you go down on the first floor any given day, they're working hard, taking care of the needs of the citizens of our city. So they are, for all practical purposes, city employees. To have some city employees get salary increases and leave them out is a major injustice, I I think what needs to be done in the future is to realize that they are city employees. It needs to be included in the budget upfront so we don't leave them dangling in the, the world of uncertainty as to whether they're going to get a salary increase or not. That needs to be addressed. The other thing that needs to be addressed is the use of the fund balance. You've heard me say this probably more than one year, certainly a lot of years. This council needs to define what we're going to use the fund balance for. It is the public's money, and instead of stockpiling it for some rainy day that's undefined even what a rainy day is, what constitutes a rainy day, we need to define that. In absence of a rainy day, instead of keep accumulating the fund over our 15% level, we need to put that money back into the community, put it to work on funding projects. Certainly not reoccurring projects, but one-time projects. And this council, nor our previous councils, have yet done that, but we, it, it needs to get done. But thank you again for being here.
Yeah, Dr. Edmonds?
Mr. Moody, I'm Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that the State Compensation Board sets the remuneration for employees of the constitutional officers and sets the allocation of personnel. So to call them city employees is not correct. They serve our city, as do the constitutional officers themselves, but they are compensated by the Commonwealth. We often supplement in certain areas. We may add people to their roles if, if we feel that we need to for them to do the job well, but as far as I can tell, they're Commonwealth employees. The other thing is, the Commonwealth has compensated them in the past at a level above what the city is able to compensate the regular employees, and so there is a give and take.
Thank you, sir. Good night. All right, Madam Clerk?
We have no additional speakers on this item, and we're in need of a motion. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, 6-0.
All right. Very good. Let me, first of all, and by way of items submitted by council, I want to do a couple of media shout-outs. First of all, I want to welcome Ms. Ida K. Jordan back into the saddle. You saw this Sunday, she had a nice article in the paper. First thing she did was took a swipe at the hospital food, so, and took that and tied it to yesterday's mom and dad's putting a, a pinch of sugar and a pitch of salt in the food and how it's being used today, a little, as she said, a little too liberal. And, but it's always great to hear from her. I enjoyed reading her article. I laughed the entire time, and I think we all knew what she meant, which we always do when she's making her point. So we want to welcome her back and glad to have her back on board. And also want to thank Wavy TV 10 today. I don't know if you saw the piece that Anita Blanton did on the downtown economic development and all of the development projects that we have in the works. I thought that was well done, and want to thank them for recognizing that, and also want to congratulate and thank Mallory for doing an excellent interview. And, and again, there's a lot of great things going on in our city, and I know we have challenging times, and you look at the times that we've gone through these last five or six years and what we've been able to do, and to a person, you've got to be able to congratulate this council and the citizens for what we've been able to do. And again, I, I respect all of our views on what we do with taxpayers' dollars, but we have a responsibility to make sure that we're one, taking care of this city and doing the things for this city that's going to meet our future needs. And there's a new day dawning in this country with urban development and people wanting to move downtown and work, live, and play closer to all of those proximities, all those things, and we've got to be able to meet those needs, and if we're not there, we're going to be left in the game. So again, it was a great article that, a great piece that Wavy did, and Mallory, congratulations, you did a great job. Secondly, let me just say, there's been quite a few people that's participated and donated in the ALS ICE Challenge. I was pleasantly surprised to see our public safety officers and the Sheriff's Department and our Fire Department participate out here on the plaza, and I think I saw two of our council members, Elizabeth and Bill, participated in that challenge, and, and yesterday I participated and won it with the I.C. Norcom, the great mighty Greyhound band, along with Aaron Carter and their band director, Ms. Juliet Borkins. And I just want to thank everyone who's participated and hope we are following up with those checks. I think the last count I saw today was they've raised almost $80 million with this challenge, and it's actually gone nationwide, and so it's great to see that, that type of spirit. I did find out from Bishop Barry Randall that I was challenged to also give in my piece to park. There was a local attachment that I didn't read that challenge. I was challenged by about three or four different people, so I guess I'll be cutting an additional check to our Portsmouth Area Resource Coalition for $150. But I only said all that to let the other council members here know that there is a challenge on, and I think each and every one of these gracious members up here has been challenged, and I think you have 24 hours, Dr. Edmonds, and Mr. Meeks, and Ms. Randall, and Mr. Cherry. So with that, Mr. Moody. Game on.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I thought I was going to get you on the rules of the thing, but you, you upped me on that. When, when you're challenged and you don't get iced, you have to write a check, right? A couple of things. One, last Saturday, I joined my colleague, Liz Bussemus, out at our animal shelter, which celebrated 125th anniversary. Lizbeth, in fact, cut the cake. Mayor and neither one of us ate the cake, so you'd be proud of us. With that said, today is also National Dog Day, and it reminded me that we still need a dog park. We, we know not where to build one. We, we've, we've had a couple of false starts, I guess, but we do need to, my challenge to staff is, for all the dog owners of Portsmouth, let's find a, a place in our city, I know that we have one, where dog owners can take their dogs to exercise. So that's my challenge, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. And before we leave that item, let me just make one-
And before we leave that, let me just make one other comment. Actually, Saturday, I was riding through Portsmouth and rode by Calvary Baptist Church and noticed the nice, beautiful flowers that were put out in front of the church. And I actually called the manager to just inquire about it. And I think you mentioned, Carol, is there anybody else in the church? John, you want to put a shout-out in because it really looks great. And to go by historic buildings like that and see that, it just changes the whole face of it. And for our citizens or church members to volunteer, to go by churches and do those types of things, and I just think it's worth mentioning. And so I saw that and called him. I think I was on my way to North Carolina Sunday when I mentioned it to you. So you want to put a plug in for everybody else? I think you said Carol had something to do with it, correct?
Yes, sir. This is a lead-up to Calvary Baptist Church's celebration of its 125th birthday next month in September. So we're purtying up the church.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
14-319, report on pending items, and we have none this evening.
Very good.
14-320, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Joe Wright.
Honorable Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, council members, Ms. Deborah Wright and her capable staff, city manager, Roe, city attorney, good sergeant-at-arms. I think I covered everybody. My name is Joseph R. Wright, 1451 Welcome Road in the city of Portsmouth, Virginia. Mr. Mayor, you stole some of my thunder because I wanted to speak on the ice bucket challenge. But first, since Mr. and Mrs. Randall are here tonight, I want to thank them publicly for starting me on my way to public service years ago, many years ago. Of course, Ms. Randall's not that old, but her husband is. And it stuck with me, and I'm still in it at 77 years old and trying to make it to So I want to thank them for starting me on my way. I wanted to speak on our public servants, my safety, public safety people. You know, I was out here Friday, and it was a lot of activity between the buildings down here in City Hall. We had the police chief, Hargers, on one side of the, I guess, the mezzanine between the two buildings.
Plaza.
The plaza, okay. Thank you, Mayor. We had the fire chief, Beck Barfield, on the other side. And then between them, we had the sheriff department and his people. And in the middle was about 100 buckets. And most of the people that was coming out of City Hall was wondering what was going on, you know? They said, well, why aren't the fire department out there putting out fires? And why isn't the police department out there arresting bad guys? And why is the sheriff not over there watching the inmates? So I had to explain to them that they would challenge each other for this ice bucket challenge to see who would raise the most money. And it was a sight to see, you know? People were, you know, even if Lavorz got in that, I think he got his camera wet, that's about all, you know? But the highlight of that was we had two city council people out there that they wanted to join in the fray. And my job was to hold their belongings, you know, while they went over to get in the challenge. You know, I had sunglasses. I remember having a wallet, radio, toupee. But I was proud to see them participate in it, you know? And with all the turmoil going on around the country, I think we have the finest public safety people in the whole country. And that was really a sight out there last Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well done, Mr. Wright. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Ms. Rita Epps.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. I'm here. Hi, my name is Rita Epps. I stay at Fort Buchanan Avenue in Swanson Home in Portsmouth, Virginia. And I guess two weeks ago, three weeks ago, y'all received a letter from me about my concern about the letters "We Care" being taken off of the police cars. And as I explained in the letter, the young lady used to live in my neighborhood, she was like 12, 13, 14 years old. And then they moved to Norfolk, and I didn't see her for 20 years. And then she, I met her again about two months ago. And she told me, she said, you know, when I was coming up in Portsmouth, she said, every time, I don't care what was going on in the neighborhood, every time that police car came around that corner, I knew everything was going to be all right because I read those letters "We Care." And I thought about that. And she told me, she said, "Ms. Epps, you got to do something about that." I'm like, what can I do? So, and she actually said she's raising a 15-year-old, an 8-year-old, and a 6-year-old. And those letters meant so much to her during the time she was coming up. She wanted to teach her children about, you know, "We Care." And we don't know how it affected the other children as well as adults when things are going wrong in the neighborhood or a community, and the police car drive up with the letters "We Care." So I, when she asked me, she said, "Do that mean that they don't care no more?" And I thought about it, I'm like, ah, you know? I didn't really know how to answer her because, you know, she was so used to seeing it up there. So anyway, and I guess I'm asking that the letters "We Care" be put back on the police cars as well as the fire department, as well as the ambulances, that we could be a city known as a city that cares and not ashamed to let anybody know that we care. And not only that, as I was writing the letter, I was sitting at home writing the letter, and I noticed that in the middle of writing my letter, I kind of got looked up because I had the TV on, but I had it on mute. And going across the screen was CBS, "We Care." I'm like, oh, wow. And it just touched my heart that, you know, anytime anybody say that "We Care," or "I care about you," and I think about our youth that's going into gangs and just walking the street hopeless and dropping out of school or whatever, because no one ever tells them or they don't know, nobody cares. But if they could read those letters, "We Care," on the side of our police cars, I think that would make a great impact in their lives. I don't know why the words "We Care" was taken off the police cars. And as I thought about it, I actually think that at that time, back in the early '90s, when the community police officers was out in communities, and the children as well as the adults and everyone else, you know, we knew them basically by name. And they were really involved in the communities, you know? Playing basketball with the different ones and going to YMCA and things like that, thanks to the police officer, the community police officer we had at that time. So, I don't know. I just told her, all I could do was come and address the city council, the mayor. I didn't know who else to go to. But, you know, so all I could do is just, I guess, plant a seed. So, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Well done. Madam Clerk?
Our final speaker is Ms. Elvira Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, protocol has been established. Good evening. I'm back to rebuttal. Two weeks ago, I was here, I spoke on the pines that Mr. Moody said we need to get a new name. We got a name, but it hasn't been adopted yet because the land has not yet been acquired. And I'm back to rebuttal last week because I sat down. And once I sat down, that's when I got chastised by Mr. Roe, Mr. Cherry, and Mr. Moody. So I'm here tonight, Mr. Roe, to let you know, yes, I do care about the children. That's why I fight like I do for the children. Although the parents are not here, I still fight for the children, and I am concerned about their safety. Mr. Moody, we do have a name. It just hasn't been adopted. The pines, Frederick Military Academy, and Carver Homes, Multicultural Center, Multicultural Community Center, the Crockett offer has one. But, Mr. Cherry, this is really directed at you, basically, not to be mean or spiteful, but I recall, I've been on my computer all day, all week, really, I'm exhausted. And you and Mr. Moody were so against us having this recreation center. And as I stated last week, timing is everything. And when you told us back in May that the land had been acquired, I wanted to make sure I understood what that word meant. Acquired mean obtained. You had obtained the land. So when you came in with your slides and gave us pictures of move-in ready, move-in ready means just that, move in, it's ready. But then when I come up here again and I get chastised by council for speaking what I see as my truth, telling me that you have to go through the surveyors and this got to be checked out and this got to be done, in other words, you lied to me and the people because the land had not been acquired. It should be acquired as of tomorrow, according to Mr. Roe. So that means when it was promised that before the children go back to school this year, which is one week from today, they will not be in there to see anything happen. So I got to make sure I got this right. So when city council tells us that something has been acquired, we are to assume acquired means three or four months down the road? Because I'm a homeowner too, so I know what closing involves. I know what it takes to close out on a deal too. And I do pay taxes, I do, on time. I'm real good with that. I can't lie to the people that ask me questions if I don't know the answers. So I'm coming to you tonight sincerely. I was angry last week because when I found out all this information about my grandchild, I lost it there. So I sat down before I finished, and that's when you had a chance to chastise me after I sat down, which meant I couldn't come back. So I'm here tonight to ask you, what is it that I'm supposed to say to the people that keep asking me, when are we coming in there? I've told them what Mr. Roe said, I told them what you said, Mr. Moody, and I've told them what you said, Mr. Cherry. So tell me now, what is it I'm supposed to tell these children that keep coming to me, asking me, Ms. EJ, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Elvira, when are we going to get into the facility that is obtained and has been acquired by the City of Portsmouth, according to Mr. Cherry, when he made his announcement? Because quite a few children seems to be looking at you. They're watching you. I'm watching you. You was at my granddaughter's graduation in Douglas Park. I even asked you. But we are not in there yet. So I got one minute and four seconds, and I'm going to stand here and wait so you can go ahead and chastise me. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And I don't think anybody means to chastise you, and I hope my colleagues, I'm almost certain they did not. I think the process of the closing and the timeframe that it took probably is a little bit longer. Council may have misspoke if members went out and said, "Acquired." We were in the process of doing that. And sometimes those things do have hiccups or there are certain things that you find that cause you to have to drill down a little further for fire to actually acquiring that. So, and as president of the civic league, I fully understand your questioning, your concerns, and there were comments made about they can get in the pool right away and all of those types of things. So we want to apologize on behalf of the council if we misled you or any of those kids, but we're going to get it right. And thank you for coming up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. And with that, I think we're ready to adjourn. I want to congratulate and hope all of our kids are very pleased for a successful summer and ready to start back school and have a good, successful year. And Mr. Randall, she's all yours, sir. We adjourn.
[inaudible].
Oh, that's your pen.